Sorry, how much chicken scratch?
Yeah, my chicken scratch is on it. Correcting it. It wasn't the one I actually sent.
Right, what's that?
What?
Hmm?
Oh, this one's in here. He said it was in there. That one is. That's the one with the writing that you...
No, but I sent you this one in an email. I sent it to you and... And this one in an email.
Is it attached?
Yeah.
I'll call the meeting order at five thirty. Welcome, everyone. It's good to see you all. Haven't seen everyone's smiling faces for a while. Um, Nancy just like that.
There's the one on the... Stand up for the forum. Page will be eight. Do you have motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move to adopt with... To take seven point three into executive session before decision and eight point two into executive session before a decision.
Seven point three. Eight point two.
Yeah.
Do you want a second? A second. All in here? Yes.
Yes.
Reports. It's over.
So we have a couple of the schools here tonight. Leslie is here for Lakeview and Spring Creek. And Jody and Bobby for TCES.
You're on.
So for Lakeview, I wanted to hold up on... With Spring Creek for Roberta, she's ill, so if we can do that together because we are called... Our respect for Roberta. For Lakeview, our current enrollment is thirty-six. Our second quarter average attendance is eighty-nine percent. Our seventh grade, eighth grade as well. We had some pretty good attendance rates in the last second quarter. We had a special guest, Jackie Byrd. She came to the school and she performed a presentation for the students. And she introduced it all traditional way. The kids really loved it and they really have fun with her. Some of the challenges, of course, all across the district snow. But one thing unique to Lakeview is the muddy roads and the muds. So sometimes it's really difficult for staff to get to students some days with our vehicles. We also have a good number of AEP students and some of our teachers are feeling unequipped to service those students. We do have an XED teacher, but in order to... Create more inclusion for our students, our teachers would... They're thinking that if they had more professional development, say in autistic, you know, professional development, that would help them be better at their craft. And then, um... We're still wondering about, you know, how staff are going to make up the snow days. I'm sure that's all across the board for the district. In the... In the bowls there, you can see the different partnerships with mental health that... That did this district-wide. The Arming Other Families effort that went really well. Parent Teacher Committees are coming up. We have the School Improvement Council. And we're going to do some meeting with the Lakeview parents. And academics is our iReady data. That's Lakeview school overall. That's not specific to grade level. That's just overall school performance. And then, um... You can see that reading is seventy-nine percent of students are making progress, which is really good, I thought, in reading. And math is fifty-five percent, which is still pretty good. Social emotional, we have our counselor there. And she's doing some individual counseling and some SEL, Life Five Counseling, classroom counseling. We have nine basketball participants and seven cheerleading participants. And in the cultural, like I said before, we had Jackie Byrd as an assembly. Nellie Tuell, she comes out and she supports our teachers in OSU implementation. And also helps the teachers with the multi-disciplinary approach. So incorporating it, incorporating it into like math, social studies, science, all across the board. I will be conducting some OSU lesson plan walkthroughs this month as well. And again, the meeting session with our Lakeview parents. And the Wolakota, the teachers are going to do a Valentine's make and take with students, parents and families. And again, I mentioned the mental health webinar and the Honor of Families event. Any questions?
How much time do you spend at both schools?
How much time? I'm usually... Well, it started out in the beginning of the year where I spent about half my time at each of the schools. And just so that Lakeview could sort of get a... Get used to me. And then, um... We sort of had some issues at Spring Creek, so I needed to be there more often. So now I'm at Spring Creek more often, except for Tuesday and Thursday afternoons. So I'm kind of back and forth quite a bit. Just because I don't want to leave out Lakeview. I know they felt a little... They wanted more of a presence last year and that's why I chose to, you know, work with Roberta. Figure out a way how to make sure that I'm there because it has... I mean, the teachers have said that it's made a big difference being present. Any other question?
So when you mentioned that you were struggling to get out there on the roads, what do you feel is the best thing that needs to be done?
Well, one of the conflicts is that we had one of our Suburbans. It was... It needed to be serviced. And like the window or something wasn't working and the floor was dry. But we had that in the shop and so the bus shop let us use one of the newer ones so that way we could transport students, especially on the east-west road where it was really hard to get to students, some of the local students. So they let us use that in the meantime and so we could get that fixed. And it's fixed now, so...
I mean, I didn't ask about time between two schools. Spring Creek seems to have way more students than Lakeview, right?
Yeah, they have about sixty-five versus the thirty-eight, yeah.
So she's there Monday, Wednesday, Friday and Tuesday, Thursday mornings, correct, at Spring Creek?
I'm at Spring Creek Monday through Friday, except for Tuesday and Thursday afternoons. And I'm sorry, Monday mornings, I start out at Lakeview. Just to kind of keep an eye on some students. Monday mornings at Lakeview. There's Tuesday and Thursday afternoons at Lakeview. The rest is all Spring Creek. And that's the schedule that Roberta, Carol and I worked out after... That after Lakeview kind of got used to me taking over just in the beginning of the year.
I know at one time there were some concerns because some of the specials weren't being addressed. Has that been worked through?
That's still an issue. It's still an issue that we're trying to work out. And I've talked with my mentor, Tiana, about some solutions. And Roberta, because she's been sort of a good mentor too, on how to figure out our specials. And Kayla said that, you know, maybe we've only had our PE a handful of times, which is very disheartening for our students. And they've had to sub for PE and that's a loss of instructional time time for them as well. And I did make a request to Carol as well to help maybe that solution for that. But that is still an issue, yes.
Is that the only special that there is issues with is PE or...
Um, mostly, yes. Yeah. With music and art, it's not so much. They plan... Like if they're going to be gone, they send sub plans ahead in time and have everything prepared.
Bobby? I printed out your iReady stuff also.
So we really wanted to visit a little bit about academic growth tonight. I included, I think we're all in the same folder, so... The first page shows our overall performance school-wide in reading. Students, the median growth was sixty-nine percent. So we were expecting, you know, fifty percent of growth for half the year, so sixty-nine percent pleased us. We did move the number of kids in green, which means in grade level from ten percent to twenty-nine percent. And we reduced the number of students in the red, which is two to three years below, from forty-nine percent to twenty-four percent. So we're seeing some good growth there. We have some major concerns over what would be this column on your report, the first little bar in the graph, which are students that met zero to twenty percent of their growth. When we really dug into this and studied it, we've got a couple... A couple things going on. One is students who are chronically truant, they're just not there to get the instruction. And the second thing being students who are in the SST process that we are maybe not seeing the growth that we need to be. And we're working on sending those referrals or getting referrals done with the XED department. Math, sadly, our overall growth is not as much. Fifty-four percent, which is still over the fifty percent... Fifty... It's kind of misleading because this is... This is like the percentage of growth they met in that bar. And then this is how many kids met their growth in this bar graph. So fifty-four percent of kids met the expected growth for one semester. But our... Our bell curve in math doesn't look as pretty as it does in reading. So I know we've talked before about our... What we're doing in reading instruction versus what we're doing in math instruction. And Carol had invited us last week to make requests for new staffing positions. And we see the need for math intervention to try to be able to like replicate this work that we're doing in reading and math. If you turn the page to the third page, the thing I think that we were maybe most excited to see in language arts or in reading was that... So this is the overall placement for the school. The growth is kids that were, you know, took the test both times. We would have some new kids in this... In this chart because we saw a lot of mobility over Christmas break and stuff. But I wanted to point out that we went from having... Or we saw a thirty-four percent increase in students working in grade level in reading, which is a third of our school. So we were, you know, that's always good to see that going up. But maybe better than that was we saw the red reduced by thirty-eight percent. So we're getting some kids pushed over there into not being as far behind. And that something we saw that looked better this year compared to last year was that across the board in all the subcategories, we made pretty equal growth. We saw a twenty percent increase in phonics proficiency, but we also saw between fifteen and twenty percent increase in both areas of comprehension and vocabulary. And vocabulary is something that we're focusing on more in our reading instruction. And so we did see the... The work from that, like the bottom... Showing very much is the fall. If you're wondering about these graphs is the lower, smaller bar is the fall and the bigger, older one is now. So in math, we saw... The last page. We saw a twenty-one percent increase. No, I'm sorry, not... We saw twenty-one students. I said that wrong in the last page too. It was the number of students increased in proficiency by thirty-five. And in math, we saw twenty-one students move into grade level proficiency. And we saw forty-four students move out of three years below and forty-seven students move out of two years behind. I mean, our math scores in the fall were really bleak with fifty-two percent of kids two to three years behind. So it's not a simple task. I mean, the skill deficits are large. But in both areas, we definitely see... Are there some kids that miss a lot of school and are still able to perform? Yes, there are. But a lot of the kids that miss a lot of school are falling behind their classroom peers academically. We have some really great intervention work specifically going on in kindergarten and we've seen some kids really take off from that, but it is really... but it is really labor intensive between the classroom teachers and the, the extra people helping with that.
How many people do you have for, to give intervention?
For intervention, we have a couple PERS utilized as intervention, but like one is long-term staffing for a teacher that broke her head. So we have two interventionists, and then we have two?
Three interventionists and two.
Three and two, yeah, three and two. The, the staffing issue is like to do that intervention work, whether, I mean, we've seen some good results with PERS and certified staff, but they need like extra training to do the intervention work. And so the, um, you know, PERS work okay with that. If they've, if we're able to give them the training they need to do it. You know, like we've added a lot of new PERS on our staff in the last year. Um, and, you know, unfortunately, their skill set isn't there yet. I have no doubt it will improve as we do more training and work more at it. But, um, I know Jodi and I are both doing like an hour of intervention work daily, to try to assist in those areas that are like really hard tasking, that we can do all day, the time available. Yeah, unfortunately, a lot of the kids are in the red too, are, they can make a lot of growth and still be in the red. You know, if you are, like the, the graph just goes to three years behind, but some kids are, um, they're more than three years behind. And so you could make a ton of growth and still be labeled as two to three years behind. I think that can be a little bit misleading about that red column.
Which we are making some progress in that. Um, this is the first two that we've had a lot of, I wouldn't say a lot. No, we've had progress in getting students qualified for the last three years. We've only had two students who we sent forward in the referral, we've sent many referrals forward. Only two students were, were tested and received exit services from that. And so we've had a four-hundred percent increase in the number of students who are being placed into services. And that is due to our intervention work and really having that data for, to, to take forward in that SST process. So that's, we're starting to make, get some traction in that SST process that we haven't had in the past. So I think that hopefully that will move that, that red bar a little more.
You have things for us?
Bobby, you mentioned chronic absences. You sent a lot of referrals to tribal night?
I think we have a little bit of confusion within our process of, like Brian is sending some over. We're making some contacts, and so like the consistency, and then the hard part has been, especially for kids who were not enrolled, is, you know, is that counted as absences? Like if you didn't enroll until November, um, were you absent, were you not absent? We're also like getting a lot of calls from schools out of the area of kids that said they were even here, but didn't enroll, and then, you know, so, and we're not looking for them. We didn't know, you know, until they call, we're not expecting them. So definitely we have some work to do to refine, I think with Brian's office, like which referrals are they making? Um, in talking to Muffy, she works with our building a lot, is it's really tough to make some of those contacts, because they do not have a working phone, and when you go to the house, they do not answer the door. So getting, you know, whether it's the tribal truancy office making the contact, whether it's us making the contact, because making the contact sometimes is really difficult. Like you know they're home, but they're not taking your, your knock on the door.
That hasn't changed then?
No. I mean, we have a couple of kids moving forward in the, that they've notified me are moving forward, I guess you'd say, in that process. Now, this is February fifteenth, I don't know, you know, like what those next steps are going to look like. And definitely still some people trying to go, like, I'm gone for five days, and then I'm here for a day, and then I'm gone for a week, and then I'm, you know, here for a day. Or I say I've moved, and we don't get any calls, so we can try to track you down, and then you're back in a month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard, are you gonna tell us some information, or are you just visiting tonight?
Oh, sure, I can tell.
We'd like to listen.
What we're up to now is, we're getting ready for our big order this year. It's going to be a little harder, because the price of the Macs and PCs and Chromebooks, Max of the twenty-five to thirty percent, um, across the board. PCs, if you want a higher, or Chromebooks are a hundred and fifty bucks more. So we'll try to get as much as, as much as we can, if there's any money left overs. Then we talk and we get things that specific schools need. It just comes down to that, it's, uh. And that's because of the shortage of, what do you call it, microchips? And lithium for batteries, that's rising prices up, and then waiting for stuff to come from China. Because the food, the food chip factories won't be built in America for four or five years, so. Probably most of those will be close to retirement, so. And, uh, we're also looking to work on this summer is the Lakeview Klein-Lewerberg, their internet access. Right now, we're, our towers, Rush, the Klein-Lewerberg, they're past their age. So we need to update them to something, so they get more bandwidth and have the same thing that all our students have. It's not fair to them, cannot have it, so. We're looking at satellite, like the Tesla, um, towers, we're just getting as many ideas as we can right now, and we'll find something out. It's not gonna, one Band-Aids, it's gonna cover everything, we're just gonna have to try to fit what we can in there. We don't have a lot of choices, so. And then also Spring Creek, we're going to be doing, when they took down the school, they tore up all our fiber, all those buildings, and they called us, and they said, where's the fiber at? And we showed them that they were parked right on top of our fiber, and they were digging it up at the same time. Oh, it's right there, they said. We have the boxes marked, so they can see where they, where they tore it out. So we'll be doing that somehow, some way. We're looking at different ways to do that, which is the, whatever's easier, either wanting one, one strand to one trailer, and kick it back and cross back to the one trailer, or running three strands, whatever. We got a couple guys that'll, that'll come in to do that. We'll have the trench, but they'll come in, we'll pay for the fiber, we'll come in, trench, we'll trench, and then we'll put the ends off for us. We haven't been trained in that, and you have to, really young eyes to do fiber, so. Very tiny and dangerous. And like I said, we had our, our gentleman called James Nolke, Last Mile Networks, he's our, he's our tower guy. He came out and looked at our towers again, and he's gonna be back here, hopefully, end of this week, to work on Lewerberg, get him up a little faster for the rest of the year. He's, uh, he's pretty good, he's bright, he, uh, he makes, he makes his own equipment, he started that first. He designed his own wireless, uh, system. And then he sold that business, business for two million dollars, and he started a new one. And he, uh, he's, he's working with this, uh, this guy who makes telco equipment, basically for like AT&T, O and West, stuff like that. But he sells it to, to the schools and towns, to you. And we could push seven hundred mags to and from the school, which is extremely fast, extremely fast. It's, uh, basically what we're pushing out every day through the whole district, through the Indian School, and that to us. And we're only using towers. And he was talking about, makes sense, because we're trying, we're trying to work with the tribe too. And we're talking about like, maybe we could work with them, we could put up with him over, over the areas, or the towns and schools, a wireless thing, cover. And he has stuff that'll cover out the four miles from the tower from a certain height. And we could offer services to our kids at home, if we just pay for that stuff, and they, they might just have to buy a new receiver, build up to like fifty bucks. And we can have some new stuff like that. That's the kind of stuff we're looking at, you know, to offer services to our kids. And then, uh, there's some more cameras we need to put up, security cameras, but we can't stand outside on the ladder right now, and we'll sink in, probably stay dangerous. And it's kind of dangerous, so we're waiting on that. And then, it's basically just, right now, we're in whatever buddy calls, and we'll do it, fix it. Like most of the stuff we can fix from our computers, but everything's online now. Our printers, our wireless access point, the switches, everything, we can log into it and work on it. Like, uh, all our kids' computers, we just gotta get one thing up on, on the web, we push it out, and then it fixes all the computer that want. And we're set up now to do that to all our staff computers. So bring a new one this year, it'll be set up that way also, so we can connect it to them. Somebody needs help getting on a printer, so just get on for a few seconds, one to that printer, and move on to the next thing. Yeah, that's all I can think of right now. I know there's more, but Yancy won't come in here, so. Any questions?
Um, you mentioned, um, you requested working with the tribe, what was their response?
Um, they wanted to go with their own stuff, their own thing. They bought a bunch of, uh, they're gonna, last I heard, they're putting up fifty towers throughout the reservation. They're gonna be offering the internet service. Except the stuff they're using is, I'm gonna use the word plastic base, so it's not gonna last as long, they say, it's telco stuff. So they're gonna have to replace it, say, every five years, keep putting up new stuff. So it's gonna, it's gonna cost them money for so many years. And the higher grade stuff, you put up twenty years, like the stuff we put out there, fine rules, only that lasts for twenty years, because it was a higher grade stuff, you get this, you pay for it. But I'm, I'm excited that they're actually doing that, offering people an opportunity to have internet access at their homes. But cheap's been what, full of lessons, so, which is nice. We may, we may still work with them somehow. They do something with our kids, maybe.
Uh, you also mentioned, um, some guys coming in?
Yeah.
You needed more training or something, is that for our, our guys too?
Fiber, none of us want to do fiber, that's a specialized, like I said, it's a young man's thing, where you have to sit there and look at a little piece of, it's, it's glass. Basically, it's a little piece of glass wire, and you gotta cut it, sand them, make sure they're clear as heck, and put it together.
A lot of times you have to use made-to-find glass, even those young kids with good eyesight, because they're so teeny tiny, fiber optics.
I haven't seen them use their iPhones, because they got that zoomed for sure.
Yeah.
Serial numbers on the computers are very tiny, like, you can't see them with your own eyes, so.
As for manpower for our team here, um, are you needing any more people?
What I'd look at would be someone to, I don't want to use the word technician, but someone to teach staff how to use the technology we have. They need to keep like track of the, like, the educational accounts, like Schoology and things of that nature.
Yes, I'm agreeing with that.
We, we need somebody like that.
So you need a trainer?
We need a leader in the educational platform.
Yep.
Yeah, like, like an offer classes after school, during, during the summer. Like going to a school on, on a day, on a PE day, and say, well, we're gonna, this is what I'm gonna show you guys how to do. You know, how to teach, what, what we have, you know? Like those, these, like, these fancy new TVs we got, show all the different things that they do. Someone who don't even know that, they're, they're building computers in there, and they can do whatever they want.
Educational technology coach, I would, I agree.
Well, that's why I'm asking questions, because I'm not as tech savvy as I'd like to be.
We have a lot of platforms, uh, I've been trying to talk with those guys, because we have a lot of, like Schoology and Clever, where a lot of that comes to me, and yet I don't know the lingo, and they're like, do, do you have this? I'm like, I don't even know what that is. So, I mean, like, somebody to like merge those two spaces would be really, really nice, because they would work with curriculum and instruction, but then they would also work with tech, so it'd be kind of like a liaison person to be able to work with teachers. So I don't have to spend an hour on a tech call with somebody, like I just did yesterday, for a problem that I don't really understand.
But you also need someone besides on the curriculum part, George Wright, to do just the hardware and the software and stuff to help our staff too, is that what you're saying too?
It's, it's more of a, like, like, like I said, Schoology, Clever, all the education programs we get to kind of run that stuff. Someone that's ahead of that, that can handle the questions, and deal, and teach how to properly use that stuff.
Yeah, because I feel like we're not very effective, because they'll come, like, just let me fix it for you, because I don't have time to.
We, we know the basics on it, you know, just to help set it up and stuff, but we don't really know how to use it. You know, we can get you set up on a computer, computer running all that stuff, and how to use that software.
It could take it, you know, it's gonna take about a year to get somebody ramped up on all the different platforms. Um, but, you know, if we can, we can get them the training, it's just, yeah, it would be really, really nice. Takes a lot of my time away, that I feel like I'm not really capable of doing, when I could be doing a lot of other, more productive things. But I shouldn't say they're not productive, they're super productive. I just feel really incompetent sometimes in that space.
It doesn't need to be a tech like myself for the answer, it can be somebody that just teaches, a lot of teachers. And it actually wouldn't be under the technology department, would be my recommendation, based on what I'm hearing, it's gonna be more under.
It could just be somebody, yeah, under me, who, yeah. Because most of it does come under my purview, so it's less about the technology and more about the, an educator who understands technology platforms, who could get trained to also navigate the troubleshooting with the technology platforms, the education platforms that we have.
Thank you, Richard, anytime you want to bring your crew, your team to enlighten us, come over.
My anthony teacher team? Yeah. I'm just talking about all of them. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. The leadership team did our review of our DISC assessments on February eighth. And, um, I think it went well, enlightening as far as, uh, how our personalities work together, um, what our strong points are, and, and what, what needs to be worked on a little bit. For all of us individually, that was a nice report, and, um, the PowerPoint was, uh, enlightening as far as, you know, how you read it, and, and what to look for in those different, um, components that you identified as. Uh, last week, we celebrated National School Counseling Week, you should have seen something go out on that. Randy's gonna attend the DSU two thousand twenty-three Teacher and Student Teacher Recruitment Fair Wednesday, the fifteenth. And, um, at our admin meeting, we talked about what positions we needed to be looking for, so Randy would know that when he goes.
Is he the only one going?
That particular one, yes. We have some other people scheduled to go to the different ones that they normally go to.
The ones in circle?
Yeah, Leslie's going to the ones who falls, correct?
Um, I'm, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to go with regions, basketball regions, I totally forgot about that, but I'm, yeah.
So will somebody replace them if they can't go? I believe we have a handful go.
I know Dana's gone in the past with me, so.
This is a one? Yeah, I mean, I'll go.
Yeah.
I like that one.
Yeah. So and then the different ones, Shadden, Black Hills. Um, DSU is new for us, and they had reached out, and they actually had, um, a list of the candidates that they had, and what, like if they were elementary education, secondary education, so that was nice. Calendar Committee is continuing to work on the proposals to bring to you. Uh, the surveys will be closing here soon for families. We have conferences, February sixteenth, from two to eight at the schools. And then, um, February seventeenth is an in-service day, and Monday's a holiday for, for the staff. Uh, we are hosting regional wrestling. We are hosting regional wrestling on Saturday, which is pretty exciting. I don't know the last time they had a wrestling meeting, but we're hosting regionals, so. The online tutoring is still available, we talked about that at Leadership, so, you know, if we have teachers who have concerns, they can tell families and students about the online tutoring. Last Wednesday, we had our Cook Center webinar on white children's self-harm. It was good, I've not seen how many have attended, but the focus was on helping individuals identify the difference between suicide and self-harm, so it was a good presentation. Few technical difficulties with technology, but the work session we had January twenty-fourth, we decided the priority projects were the high school, spring prick, housing, and the bus shop. Prom is set for April fifteenth, and the backup is April twenty-second. And mission games are the twenty-sixth again, so. I see.
Any questions for?
Um, oh, prick. They don't have a position for a bus driver custodian anymore?
They actually, the last person that was there was actually an employee at the bus shop that was allowed to help out out there. So we can continue with that, but there has to be some follow-up with the other employees, so.
So there, is there a position there that's being advertised or not being advertised?
No. It would be a bus shop position.
They don't have their own just bus driver custo, so what do they do for custodial services?
Um, Cook is two hours, I think Karine is helping drive and getting overtime. And there's another para that's helping out with custodial work.
Has the others presented?
Um, for a while.
But didn't they have their own bus driver?
Yeah, going back probably to little chain works back then when we had.
Quite a few years ago.
So it's been a while, so.
So and then we just stayed away with that position and now we just use in-town people?
No, it was assigned to the bus shop because we had an individual that wanted to work there, but wanted to work twelve months. So that's where that little thing's at. So it's not that there's not an opportunity there, they're just.
Twenty-six. So that's the, the white envelope in the back is for you to take and look at and process what numbers or at what schools. And then I also included the form that needs to be considered by March first, where if we're gonna change any of the schools and grades that they do, we need to have that completed by March first. So just some information for you to look at, think about, and then have a conversation. That's the form that if we're gonna change, it has to be done by March first. Last year, if you remember, we had the Hee Dog School, but we hadn't named it yet. But then they, the community voted to leave it the same, so we didn't have to do anything with that. Any questions for superintendent?
No. I guess it's just like, I gave everybody a copy of it, Debbie, Joe, it's just for, yeah, just for discussion. It's not, I'm not asking for approval, 'cause according to our own policy, it's not if there were any other suggestions on them or anybody had comments on them. It was for a discussion for the board to be transparent to the public that, 'cause one of our main functions in our policy is revision and creating policy and keeping policy updated.
I do realize that, but I was just thinking about the gist of the whole board and all the other things that we do have to discuss.
Okay.
So are you gonna do, move it? No, we can just discuss it. Policy six-one.
I guess this IMD, the OSHA, the OSCEUs, we talked about this clear back on September fifteenth when we had a policy review. I don't think Sage and Michelle were in attendance for that. And then we wordsmithed this one, me, you, and Linda. And then we, you were gonna bring it back for the whole board to review, and then it never came back for the whole board to review, because we looked at the old policy and the old policy is dating itself and that lists specific dates when things are gonna be done. And at the end of this school year, it outdates itself. It goes to 2023, 'cause it's actually listed, outlines what we want each year.
I mean, I think that's one of the reasons that we need to discuss it. And I don't remember Sage and Michelle were gone at that time, but we just have to bring back for discussion. So all five of us are here.
Yeah.
That's what it was.
Yeah, I don't think it was meant to be to stop at that end, or just to set a timeline, or what you were supposed to be set up. The way it's structured out, the way it's structured out is just kind of gives specific guidelines to the administration team, ed leaders to like, how do you, how do you meet this policy? When I look at this, since you made this move, so tell me how this is gonna hold people accountable.
Well, actually, it's supposed to be more to, for the administrators to hold their staff accountable and for the superintendent to hold the administrators and down the line accountable. I guess this one, to me, seemed more like, and I'm gonna say this wrong, 'cause I'm gonna think with my government brain, this was almost like a performance standard, where if they didn't meet this, I mean, you have things in here where they have to meet, more like when they do their teacher evaluations, is what it looks more like an evaluation tool than it looked like a policy to me. And I could just be reading it wrong, but that's how I read it, is more of an evaluation tool, because it goes into the goals and the objectives and needing it. Whereas this is saying, we're gonna have it and need it in all areas. And I see this outlines it, but then I guess I didn't understand the need for the background.
Another of our other policies have background information. I think everybody understands what is here, but to me, also, it seems like it's more procedural. And if you're a teacher and you look at this, you're not gonna take the time to go right through it and read everything and say, oh, this is what I'm supposed to do. This is a lot more clear and it identifies who's gonna be making sure that it's accountable. And we have people here that are administrators that might wanna say something about it. This is a discussion item.
I think the line Melissa's presenting is very clear and concise and for the public to be able to understand, families, parents, all stakeholders, very understandable across the board. And especially as an administrator and teacher, I think it's very clear and concise. And the one, the previous one is like more detailed for the administrator. That could be like a subgroup specifically for administrators to implement for teachers.
I think it came to that, like the Lakota Culture and Language Committee then took that guidance that was in the original and then set out like an action plan. And so I think that action plan now kind of lives with that committee. And I believe we're, you know, we're able to set those goals and we have, you know, board members on that committee too. So I feel like the newer version does it just a little bit clearer and then it just allows that Lakota Culture and Language Committee to be the group that kind of sets the vision for how that gets implemented and that, like revisits timelines and things like that to make sure it's happening and gives guidance to administrators and to teachers as to how we make sure we're holding people accountable. 'Cause I think that's still a very important part of that.
I see three administrators over there, would you care to comment?
I think Chris, you just called it like the action plan or the implementation plan. I think of that as being something that comes from the district office, like implementation of other curriculum. You know, like the timing of it, what you expect to see in a lesson, those sorts of things. So it does feel like the policy needs to be more concise, while the implementation plan could be more thorough. So you're saying this new one is more workable? I think so, I mean, people get really bogged down in the language of the other one, like what does this mean? What does this look like? There's a couple of specific language things in there about the assessment and stuff like that that I think needs cleared up if it, if it isn't going to be the more concise version.
Now, one of the things that we found in our building with the first version, I think that it was the impetus for some good work and the committee work that's being done in the action plan. But we have staff members who are going well above and beyond and probably are not tracking near as much as what they're actually doing, because they're like unclear because of the language in it. And then we have other people who are not really integrating their, I read this story and so that's my Lakota language lesson. And so we have, which, in anything we do, we're gonna have that gamut. But we feel like the language in that first one is lining things out to the point where we don't have as much control to say like, this is what integration is like. It is sort of devolved into, I check mark, I did my lesson. And it might not be true integration or it might not be as far as we wish we were going.
And this one, it allows for the superintendent and the administrative team to devise out evaluation, to come up with what's in this first one that was done, along with the curriculum people, to come up with that evaluation tool, so that we know that that isn't happening anymore, that it's all, this is what it is.
Dana?
The first policy is very thorough. And it, I think at the time, it is exactly what we needed to get implementation pushed up to the district. I understand where you're coming from with the policy being very concise and allowing the committee work and the administrators to do the work in the classrooms that need to be done for integration. In saying that, I understand where Sage is coming from, because the hard thing is, is that it, great, I just wanna make sure that it's happening across the school board, or across the school district. I mean, I can speak for my building, but I can't speak for anybody else.
What it does about three lessons and all the good?
Right, exactly, it needs to be more than that. And I guess I expect more than that, and we just need to make sure as an administrative team that that's what's happening.
Comments, board?
I was just gonna say, in writing, in reading the policy, administrative team, you know, like, in anywhere in a policy that it, that it like tell you that you couldn't, like you couldn't discuss your findings. So let's say if you have twenty, twenty staff and you got like about what, sixty lessons going. And out of all those sixty lessons that you go through, and you find like maybe fifteen lessons are just not so well. In that policy, did it hinder you from making adjustments to help those teachers?
Not towards helping them, but I think that just as we are bound by the policy, that we are bound to the teacher saying, well, I did three. You know, and we might say, you did, but, you know what I mean? And so they have that option to fall back on the policy and say, I followed the policy.
And we don't have anybody currently pushing back on doing more than three. I think that's a fear that I have. There's actually a very specific spot in there though, I don't have it, if I have already. About the plan of assistance stuff. About the assessment. The students' output from the lesson will demonstrate they've met the standard. Like, the way the OSCE standards are written, they're really, there's currently not very specific grade level measures. You know, a kindergartner is never going to meet the standard. They might meet the benchmark we set towards the standard. So like, that's really hazy, but then the teacher should have evidence, artifacts of informative tasks and summative assessments that led their students to successfully meeting the OSCE standard identified in the lesson plan. In a case where instructional staff are not able to meet the standard, the evidence and artifacts collected will ensure the teacher gets assistance to be successful. I think like that's hazy when it says, they get the assistance, because is the assistance a classroom manager issue? Is it a resources of OSCEU stuff that's the issue? And then instructional staff shall be put on a plan of assistance as it's a concern about the learning environment. It's like, are, so do we, is, I mean, it's just really hazy, 'cause like, is the assessment done from that one day's lesson? Or is the assessment from a whole unit? Or like, if, like, for example, I think of a teacher in our building who put a lot of work into a really good unit, I think it needs some refining, the instruction does. And I think she discovered where she needs to search up additional resources. I don't think that the students would have necessarily met the standard as a whole group. I would not wanna put her on a plan of assistance for that. Would I see the level of effort going into it? Like, a plan of assistance is a formal process. I would definitely wanna offer support, I would definitely wanna to get her in touch with the right people to make that unit better. I would not want her to feel like she was being punished by a formal plan of assistance when she really actually put forth some really good work. And that was, that's the kind of stuff that I worry about in there.
Well, are you saying that this policy would do that to the teacher?
Well, the policy says they'll be put on a plan of assistance.
If they weren't able to convey content, right?
If the assess, if the specific assessment does not show that.
For the lesson.
Well, that's where, that's where I don't know, is it the lesson, is it the unit as a whole?
It said a lesson, it didn't say classroom management, it said a lesson. It said the lesson that the teacher was going to teach and integrate, the skills that they need to be successful in creation. It's all about how can a teacher be successful in implementing that content. But if they weren't able to do that, that means they're incompetent.
I would say, I think.
Or they could.
There's a lot more that goes into it in teaching the OSU.
On any policy or anything you go with in, in the practice of teaching, where in this policy is it going against the practice of teaching?
Well, I mean Sage.
Identify, identify, now I'm asking you to identify where in this policy is it going against the practice of teaching?
It's not, but it's going into the evaluation of teaching and the board doesn't set the evaluation guidelines for each building. That's up to the building administrator and the superintendent. And right here in policy, we're saying, if you don't follow especially this goal too, you're going on a plan of assistance. We're putting that in policy. Where else in our policy?
It's their, it's their decision. It's their decision to put the person on the plan of assistance based on their evaluation of how they're implementing that lesson. Isn't that all written there?
I, I take it, I, I don't, that could be a misunderstanding that I had Sage, that I need cleaned up. Because when I.
That's all it is, saying that, saying. You evaluate the, the teacher just like you go and validate any other teacher and what they're implementing the lesson. And you decide whether or not they, they need a plan of assistance or not.
Why did you put one less, the first?
That's what it says there. It's, it's specific in that way so it helps them to be successful at what they're doing.
But that seems really harsh.
If I even say this for anything, if you, if you were going to have a kid that was in the IEP, you would have the same thing so that that teacher is successful at implementing and making sure that you have the most exclusive, inclusive room as possible. This isn't meant, this isn't meant to take, I don't, I don't, I can't find anything coming. Do you guys find something where, where it's?
I guess my thing with it is, is though, is we don't have this policy where we have all of this written out for math curriculum. We don't have it for reading curriculum. We don't have it for science curriculum. So we've kind of set this one out and made our OSU curriculum unique. And, and it should be here in our area. But I, I mean, I, I understand, you know, it's, it's a, it's a territorial thing. I was just trying to simplify it for our administration and for our teachers and to ensure that the OSU standards were still going to be implemented, still be taught in our classrooms and that it still covered the fact that they have to bring written proof here that it's being done. And, but that it was up to them to determine how to do it in their buildings. And it wasn't the board who was going to say, no, you have to do it this way, this way, and this way. And this is what I want you to bring to me to show you did it this way, this way, and this way.
That's not what this policy says. This policy says that, that administrators have full power to tell the curriculum director what their needs are for professional development. If they decide that we need more land and environment, information and content and experts in that area, you can inform the curriculum director what their needs are so you can get the help. That's what it was designed for. It was not designed for us to control that. It was designed for, there's an opportunity there written by policy. Just as policies are written all, all across the United States. Nobody's going to buckle up unless you have a policy that says you have to buckle up. Same thing here. It's to state that, it's to state that it's important and there's a process there. It's to help us have excellent teachers. It's to help us to move to the next level where we could be. It's, it's not the things I'm hearing that, the things I'm hearing, that's not what this says. Would not write something like that. Would not offer something like that.
I don't, yeah, I don't think that was definitely an intent. And I think that, I think we have to have a policy. I believe in that wholeheartedly. And I think it's, it was a perfect move at the time to get where we are going.
I think we believe in having a policy also. But just need some clarification of that language. I, I by all means think that we should clarify to staff that that is our intent and that it is considered like, like all other instruction.
It's nothing, I just want, I just want our teachers to have a good opportunity. You know, I want them to be successful here. It's what people have been wanting for a long time, they've been wanting. That's why we have responsive classrooms. Well, we need culture responsive classrooms. That's why education has been changing throughout these years. And, you know, it wasn't even in the constitution, but it was important. And it changed over through policies and case laws like that to make sure that everybody had access. And now, now we're looking even more deeper into what actually gives, gives kids an opportunity in a classroom. That's what this is. But I understand, I, if there's clarity needs to be taken, yes, like, let's do that. But to do this and to say like this is the same as this, then prove it to them. How is this going to really lift this up right here? How is this going to be like? How is a, a teacher that comes into our district and wants to implement and needs help, how are they going to get the PD that they need? There's already so much PD when we first implement, when we first try to push this through that there were so much other PD that was needed that needed to be replaced. How are we going to ensure teachers get the PD they need, P, professional development they need to fully implement this? This is just the beginning. I know there's, the, the OSU is just, it's just the surface, it's just the surface of what PD. And if we don't have content that's available or curriculum that's available, then that should come out in some of the, the lessons. We couldn't do this for math because we couldn't find nothing. But that should be some of your data that sup, that supports her so that she's able to get some, get some data well-collected so there can be, so there can be some content. And that, that's what this is for. What it's doing is meant for.
I don't think it's the board's job to tell how policies are going to be run. The policy is written to give direction. I think that's our responsibility as a board. We have a superintendent and we have administrators. And we have a policy that says this is what we'd like. Now you go out and make sure that it's implemented and that and stuff. This just seems like we're controlling.
I'm not controlling this. I'm not controlling it. It's way up to the superintendent to.
It's my opinion.
To administer that and it's up to the, it's up to the administration. Where in this does it say that? Does it say that I'm controlling it as a board member? Does it say I'm controlling this as a board member?
Pretty much does.
You are in full control of.
Plan of assistance is another thing.
Control of your assessments and your evaluations. You control that. You control all the data you collect. I don't control that. All I'm saying is there's a policy there and you have full trust that you make it happen. In this, I, it's not written to say that I'm in control.
I mean, I'm open to, I'm open to changing it.
Managing in this at all. You can look at it.
But I'm open to changing it, but there needs to be some more clarification for staff.
Record, I don't want, seems to be said that this is detrimental to anybody. This is not detrimental. This policy is not detrimental to anybody.
There needs to be some updating to the current one though. And I mean, and if that's a night where we get together as a board and be open about taking some constructive criticism and the fact that some of this language needs to be changed, the dates need to be updated because my policy is our law. And there are actual dates in here that are going to update this policy. So it has to be updated either way. So if that's a night, we have to get together and go through it and work through it. But it needs to be updated.
I don't, I don't take any of this as being territorial because I was one of the board members that was on when this came about. And I don't know if you were then too, Linda?
Yeah.
And Michelle?
I was.
Yeah, I don't know. But when it came about, I mean, it was, it was started, you know? It wasn't developed, you know, by the curriculum team, you know, with the curriculum team, but it was a start. I mean, it was a start. We went by, you know, a lot of resources for, and I say we, you know, by, you know, some, some people that did start OSU. So I mean, this is where we got to start. It's not to be taken, you know, territorial or saying that it's the, you know, the above all that. But I do think that we need to take it back to the table and bring it, bring some more clarity to it. And, and I do agree with that, you know, it's not the board's job to govern everything. But I, I just think we need to take it back to the table. I mean, it's the administrators, the superintendent and the administrators, you know, to do the work. But we, we govern what's being done.
I have a little background in board meetings and sometimes they have a board dinner when they have to deal with sticky or, or controversial situations. Maybe a board dinner would be something that you guys would enjoy and you could speak about something that's very important to our kids.
And I can see it's important to, to all of us, Linda, you know, administrators. Thank you for, you know, putting your comments and. So the board can bring, table this one and bring it up.
I think we should definitely table it, but I really, really feel strongly that. I teach over at the college and we always try and say that our college doesn't like any other college because we're a local college. And we try and make sure that we meet these standards where I work over there. And I know that that's really important for students. I really believe that these are chatty, shuffling, essential understandings should be. I mean, this, I like this, that it's simple, but it's almost too simple. And this one's, I think we do need some work that I think we should table it and discuss further. But I like that this puts out what we want taught because that's really important. It is important. And this one is very vague. I know it's simple, it's vague. So maybe somehow we can come to a point where we can find agreement with all of us, including administrators and everybody, to do something that's good for our children because that's what we're here for.
But I think when we come to the table to discuss these, that it needs to not just be this board. Because even in our own policy, when, and it's in the board policy, when we revise policy and create policy, we're supposed to invite all of the stakeholders and get their input when we're creating that policy too. That's why I had asked for this to be a board discussion tonight, to start getting that input because we really don't get that. And so I think when we do, that this needs to be something where everybody is involved or are invited and they can choose to come or not come, but that their voices need to be heard too.
I will say in common that this was, this curriculum was put on by our stakeholders and constituents that supported this. So it's not, it isn't, we're not a, the, the board that adopted this and approved it. So this came out of, you can go to SGU forum meetings where they talk about the need for this. You can go to the public records of the tri-pass for this, even with the RSDA, you're going to find it there. So it's nothing that you weren't asked, I've been to your forum, Linda, where you talked about the importance of this. This is, this isn't something that, we're not saying we didn't invite them. It's something that is always been important, but it's for the record, it's saying that too.
And I don't think we have to go back and reinvent the wheel because we already have the Culture and Language Committee formed. So that would be time for some key collaboration, in my opinion.
The next policy I brought forth was DE and that was the policy that I had asked permission to work with Rodney, our attorney on, Rodney Freeman on, in mainly replacing the teleconference meetings part with remote participation.
Discussion?
Did you say that it was recommended that we have a policy out of this?
Um, I had been, Rodney looked at it and thought it was excellent. He worked with me and Carol on it to update the codified law to meet this. Our current policy covers teleconference meetings, but due to the pandemic era, when it made it possible for people to remotely call in for that type of thing, and that's covered in here too, for a pandemic situation or a outbreak of something or whatever. But more and more people are participating in meetings through Zoom, through Teams calls, through phone. So this would just outline for everybody's expectations.
Board?
We can insert education leave if you need to.
What's that?
Education holidays.
Yeah, it could be inserted.
Did you say education leave?
Perhaps we can bring this back after the other one for further discussion. Does that sounds workable?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Michelle?
Yeah, that, that would be good.
Because I, I feel there needs to be a lot of clarification.
Maybe for that one, we could meet with Rodney. He went through it all.
He's always available for.
Yep.
Conference calls. And I talk to him all the time on the phone about other things. Moving on, seven, consent agenda.
Move.
Second.
Move by Melissa. Second by the, call in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Seven two, review of approved policy G.
Move.
The second. Motion by Melissa. By Linda. Call in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Five zero. Seven three, authorize the superintendent.
I asked for this to be executive session.
Seven four.
Move.
Calendar amendment. Approve an amendment to the calendar to allow attendance centers to choose March 15th as student makeup day.
Tell second.
Moved by Melissa. Second by Michelle. Call in favor?
Yes.
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 Calendar amendment two. Move to change the calendar for start time of eight twenty-five and then end time at three twenty-five for the remainder of the school year.
Move.
Move by Michelle.
Second.
I mean, move by Melissa, sorry. Second by Linda. Call in favor?
Yes.
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 Five zero. Certified contract, elementary counselor.
Move.
By Melissa.
Second.
Second by Sage. Call in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, five zero. Eight two, accept administrative retirement from harness welcoming principle.
Exactly.
Personnel. Um, we also need an exec four.
All move to go on exec. Do you want to take a five-minute break?
Moved by Melissa.
Oh, second.
Second by Michelle. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Thank you everyone for coming. Come back again. Come back again.